Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call the St. Patrick's Day addition of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner, what have we got tonight? Commissioner Wilder, lead us in the invocation. Commissioner Caraway will lead us in the pledge.
Help out with us. Hey, Lord, we want to thank you for seeing another beautiful day. We want to thank you for the many blessings you've bestowed upon our community. We ask that you look over our police, our firefighters that protect us here, and our soldiers and armed forces that protect us abroad. We ask that you give our leadership in Lake Capital and in Washington DC some wisdom with which to make decisions. We ask you to look over our meeting tonight, give us a good meaning. We ask that everyone, thank you for everyone that came tonight, that they give a safe drive back home at the end of the day. In name we ask, amen.
With allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. If you would, please silence your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We do have all five commissioners present tonight for 100% quorum. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting on March 3rd. If there are no additions or amendments to those minutes, I'd like a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes as submitted, passes 5-0. Gentlemen, you've also had a chance to review tonight's agenda. If there are no amendments or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda as submitted, passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on March 29th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in this same room. If you wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden, and she'll provide you with a request to speak for them. We don't have that, I think the Board of Education has the same form or a similar form for, to speak at their meeting. We don't have that requirement in this meeting. If you have something that you'd like to add during the public hearing portion of our meeting, raise your hand and we'll call you up to the, to the mic and give, give us what your opinion is in three to five minutes, for or against. If you have something that you'd like to get on the record that's not on the agenda tonight, we also have a public comments section at the end of the meeting. Same process, raise your hand, we'll ask you to come to the dais and give us your, your thoughts in three to five minutes. With that being said, we'll dive right into tonight's agenda. And Mr. Butler, I believe we have two massage operators licenses from you.
We do. We have, the first one is Angelica Rosario, DBA Sunny Orchids, Thai Bodywork and Massage at 3685 Verwach Parkway, Suite 105, on premise massage only, assuming all requirements of the ordinance and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Sunny Orchard Thai Bodywork and Massage.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Mr. Butler will stay with you for the second massage operator's license.
Second one is Youngui &amp; Z's Incorporated, DBA Oriental Massage at 4158 Washington Road, Suite 10, also on premise massage only. By that being all requirements of the ordinance, staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll need a motion, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage operator's license for Youngui &amp; Z's Incorporated doing business as Oriental Massage, massage therapist, Youngui Song at 4158 Washington Road, Suite 10.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Does anybody like to applaud his pronunciation? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, we got a temporary use authorization, tax map 043 parcel 074.
Request for a TUA at 276 GR Tucker Road, it's 4.86 acres, currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural Cultural. Those are the location of the property, again off, on GR Tucker Road. Also the area of the site, they're planning to keep this current mobile home in place while they put a double lot on the property. There'll be, there'll, there will be some overlap between the two. I plan to have the, the double lot basically in the summer essentially. They do plan to have everything out by end of the year. However, they do get a whole year to be able to do it, to do this work if they so choose. And so I recommend approval of the temporary use authorization.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the temporary use authorization for 276 GR Tucker Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, we've got a provisional home ox for Breaking Chains Fitness LLC.
Yes, sir, this is a provisional home occupation at 6690 Swint Combs Road for Breaking Chains Fitness. This is the location of the property outside of Harlem off Swint Combs Road. And currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. This is the aerial of the site, you can see the existing house and accessory building. You can see the surrounding properties are also large lot properties and some undeveloped at this time. So the applicant is proposing to use the existing detached garage on the property for a personal training gym. The intent is to have two to four clients on Fridays and Saturdays between 9:00 AM and 6:00 PM. Parking is available on the site. And there is a condition proposed to clarify that per home occupation requirements, the business is not allowed to have more than six clients per day to meet home occupation standards. The structure and the driveway are quite close to the side property line, but as we saw a moment ago, the adjacent property is quite large and currently undeveloped. It is actually in conservation use as well, so it's not likely that the owner over there would be disturbed by any of the activities on this property. We can also see that there are quite a few existing trees on all the sides of the existing buildings, so there, there's quite sufficient buffer and screening from the neighboring sites. Swint Combs Road is a county maintained gravel road. We did include traffic engineering on the review of this, but the additional traffic load is minimal and there are no concerns with the maintenance of the road. And staff is recommending approval with the condition limiting the home occupation to a maximum of six clients per day in line with the home occupation ordinance.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any questions to staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, excuse me, to approve 821 provisional home occupation for Breaking Chains Fitness with provisions.
Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Butler, individual plat for White Oak Road Group LLC.
Request for an individual plat located off White Oak Road, 20.92 acres, looking to get three lots, current parcel. Location of the property on the south side of White Oak Road. Also the aerial view of the property. Also the individual plats. So the reason you guys are seeing this, back in 2018, they started set aside in this parcel. They went through a minor plat, a minor, minor plat process. There's a five-year moratorium put on that, when you use that process, further set about the property. Last year, they used it to set aside the property off of Shu Craft Road. So we're still within that five-year time period, so this does require them to come out before the commission to ask for any further setage of the property. Staff does recommend approval of their request, not include staff recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, I'll need a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the plat for White Oak Road Group LLC to create three lots at 5570 White Oak Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Okay, we'll move right into our public hearing portion of the evening. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220303, major S1.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major revision to the S1 special zoning at 949 Apling Harlem Road. This is the location of the property just outside of Harlem, at the intersection of Apling Harlem Road and Fairview Drive and Old Union Road. And again, currently zoned S1 special that was applied in 2014 for a charter bus depot and storage facility, and that had quite a few conditions on that rezoning, including some specifically limiting the use on the property. This is the aerial of the site, you can see it is in, in operation for that charter bus depot and storage facility. And the existing site, now in 2018, a minor revision was processed for this S1 to allow Temso, which is a motor coach sales and kind of custom business to operate from this property. They just have a sales office and they keep a few coaches on site for sales purposes. Since that was a minor revision, it could not apply the additional use to the property permanently, so it did have a condition on it limiting them to one year. It was supposed to be a temporary site for them. They did apply for the business license in 2018 and begin operations on the property, and that license then lapsed until they requested renewal in November 2021. At that time, they were informed that the condition on that minor revision, you know, had limited them to the year and that that year had expired. So the major revision is to allow the sales office there as a permanent allowed use on the site. They did begin operations there, the very minor expansion from the, the already allowed use on the site, and there's no, no anticipated impacts from allowing them to continue operating there. In terms of future development, this is in the rural character area on the future land use map. This area is intended to provide for a very low-density, single-family residential development, which this obviously is not. However, this is an existing facility that was in place before this current comprehensive plan, and the requested addition is a minor expansion of the use that's already in operation. Staff therefore recommends approval with the condition that with the exception of planning condition number four, which is the one that restricted the uses allowed on the property, all of the other conditions adopted with that original zoning shall still apply, and that that condition for the uses is revised just to include the proposed sales office as the additional allowed use on the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is anything additional you'd like to add? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ 22-03-03 with conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220304.
Request for a conditional use for a gym at 901 William Few Parkway, it's currently zoned M2, general industrial. Location of the property just north of the intersection of Chamblin and William Few Parkway. Currently zoned M2, everything around it is zoned M2 with a couple of M1s at close proximity. Also aerial view of the property. Site, as well as the plat and the sketch plan. So one of the things you'll see, they have ride-in, ride-out here and their current full access there. There are definitely some concerns with access to this property. We're currently working with the applicant to, to figure out the best way for them to access the property. It's currently drawn, this will not work. So we are, we are recommending to postpone the request, they've also agreed to postpone the request as well for us to work out how travel will be handed on the site. That being said, we do have, in terms of future development, it is within the employment center. This would, would meet the intent of, of the future land use map, so no concerns there. There are some issues with the access side of things, so again, we are recommending to postpone the request to March 31st. The applicant has also agreed with that as well. We think that should be sufficient time. We've already gotten the first go-around of the, the access plan, so we should be able to work it out by then.
Okay, great. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Even though the applicant has asked us to postpone, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing. If there's anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning, we'll go ahead and hear that now, but the floor would open up again on the 31st as well. So, does anybody like to speak? Have seen, yes, sir. This is a fitness center. Yes, I believe it's the same folks that operate Evans Fitness that are, they're looking at going out there. Okay, so since there's nobody that wants to speak tonight, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone until March 31st.
Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion to postpone, file RZ 220304, conditional use for a gym at 1901 William Few Parkway to the March 31 Planning Commission meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion postponed until March 31, passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220305, major PUD.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major revision to the planned unit development off Wrightsboro Road, and this is for the Wrights Farm project. This property is located on the south side of Wrightsboro Road and primarily on the west side of Reynolds Road, and is currently zoned planned unit development. We did, not too long ago, see the rezoning to add this piece into the PUD, so we are now looking at a revision to kind of this whole end for the next phase. This is the aerial of the site, showing some of the recent development and the existing phases of the development. And this was the approved concept plan with the rezoning that added that additional land into the PUD, so we can see the additional farm space here and then the additional kind of gridded lot layout at this end of the project. As they have gotten further into engineering for this site, they have realized that this layout is not actually feasible to build. The grading doesn't balance and it does cause some issues with serving sewer to some of the lots, particularly these ones on the kind of the south side. So they have proposed a revision to this concept plan, so this relocates the farm to that south side where they couldn't easily get sewers to instead of on Wrightsboro Road. So the, the major concern from staff is this long row of kind of backs of houses fronting onto Wrightsboro Road. So we do have several conditions proposed to help address that with fencing and landscaping requirements, to kind of help try and dress that frontage up some. I think we're, we're all aware and the applicant is aware that aesthetically, this is not necessarily the better layout, but again, the, the original one is not constructable in the way it was laid out. So staff is recommending approval. This is in the neighborhood's character area, and the use is not changing. It is remaining single-family residential with the same proposed number of lots, so there, there's no changes to the density or the use with this revision. So we are recommending approval with several conditions. Some of these are carried forward from the original zoning, such as the minimum buffer width. Others are new and specific to the change, so the buffer along Wrightsboro Road, including a minimum six-foot tall privacy fence with the finished appearance to Wrightsboro Road, with the HOA responsible for maintaining the fence on all of the affected lots and choosing a consistent stain or paint color for the entire length. Required buffers being supplemented, and then the landscape plan being required with the preliminary plat for these affected sections, and that plan is to be required to exceed the requirements of our buffer code, so not just to meet them, but actually to exceed them, to have additional landscaping there with a variety of plant material for adequate screening and visual interest for this road frontage. And then the side setback condition for the 50 and 60-foot lots that carries forward from the original zoning. And staff is recommending approval with those conditions.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? All right, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing, is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is anything you'd like to come forward and add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, I'd like to continue. If there's anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve, file RZ 220305, major PUD revision for Wrights Farm located off Wrightsboro Road and Reynolds Road to revise the conceptual plan.
Could I get you to add with conditions? Your motion?
With conditions.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve, passes 5-0. Ms. Montgomery, file RZ 220306, rezone from C2 and R4 to R4.
Yes, sir, this is a request to remove the C2 general commercial zoning from a currently split-zoned property to leave the entirety of the property zoned R4 recreational residential. This is the location of the property on the west side of Washington Road, near Ridge Road and Ray Owens. And as we can see, currently split-zoned, the general commercial zoning was added in 2003 onto the, on the northern half of the property. As far as we can tell, there's no business license that's been, ever been active on this property, it's not been developed as commercial use. It is an existing house and existing garage building, which you can see here. There's no signage, paved parking, landscape strip, any of the, the typical accretments that would go along with kind of commercial development of the property. And so it's, it does remain very residential in nature, and the applicant is intending to purchase the property and continue using it as a residence. So he is requesting to remove the commercial zoning from the site. In terms of future development map, this property is in a community crossroads. These are intended to provide areas for development of neighborhood commercial uses around major intersections. Residential use is not really the intent of a crossroads, but you'll see that this is kind of at the southern edge of that crossroads. So kind of taking this out of commercial use encourages, kind of keeps that commercial development concentrated around the intersection, which is kind of the intent in these rural areas. And staff is recommending approval of this request.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am, is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, file RZ 220306, rezone from C2 and R4 to R4 at 6564 Washington Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. We've got a conditional use for a convenience store with gas pumps, file RZ 220307. Ms. Mystery, before you start, Mr. Sterling, could you refresh the board's memory as to what withdraw without prejudice means with regards to this, because I believe the applicant has requested that.
They have, and what that means is, is that if the Planning Commission is willing to grant that withdrawal without prejudice, they would then stop this process, they would no longer be moving forward with their application, and they would be no additional actions that would be required of the Planning Commission. There wouldn't be a plan moving forward for their particular proposed use. They could reapply at any point past that, but they would, they would not be moving forward at this current time with their proposed application.
If they reapply with this application or any, anything else, it would have to be advertised?
Yeah, go back to the same exact process. Signs would be put back out on the side.
Hypothetically, if we approved it, it would go forward to the Board of Commissioners?
Correct.
And they would have the final approval on it. If we disapproved?
Would make a recommendation to the board.
If we disapproved it, it would go forward with them with the same, the same, the same scenario as them approving or disapproving. If it was disapproved at that level, they couldn't come back for six months?
If it was disapproved, it would not be, it's rezoning, so it would be on the shelf for six months.
Okay, so by withdrawing without prejudice, they avoid the?
Opportunity to, to reapply for anything within that, that particular C1.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Ms. Mystery, that being said, if you go forward with your presentation, please.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a conditional use for a convenience store on gas pumps. The location is 128 Old Evans Road on 1.8 acres, and the current zoning is C1 neighborhood commercial, and it's an existing vacant residence. Here is the location, it's at the intersection of Old Evans Road and Murray Road. Here is the zoning map that shows the C1. It is surrounded by R3, which is the yellow color, it's single-family residential there. To the south, there's some S1 for daycare, there's the fire station and some other C1 and C2 zoning. Here's a close-up of the aerial that shows the vacant home, and a photograph of that. Here is the plat of the property. And this was the concept that was submitted in 2020 when the C1 was approved, and that just showed a retail store and the possibility of two or three tenants in there and the, the parking lot and access drive. And that was, the C1 did get approved at that point, but there was a, a number of conditions on there. So there was some concern from the staff based on the sewer access to the property and the buffer requirements, and then traffic engineering also had these conditions. So the C1 was approved, but there's always these extra things to work out for the development of the property. The current concept plat, concept plan is this, it shows the, the building right here in the center. The gas pumps would be on the front here, facing Old Evans Road, and then you've got two access drives, one on Murray Road at the back, and then one here, which is actually lined up with DeSoto Drive where the fire station is, although that does encroach into the buffer to the neighbor's property right there. The retention pond is at the back. And this plan does illustrate that it generally meets the, the code requirements for this type of development. However, with the intensity of use as a gas station, staff is concerned with increasing traffic, the fuel tankers that would be required for delivery, et cetera. Murray Road is a narrow road, it's about 20 feet wide, I believe, and so there were several concerns for this proposal. For the future development map, this is in the activity center, the mixed-use activity center, it's right on the edge of that. When the C1 was approved in 2020, this was in the neighborhood section, but it was on the edge of the mixed-use center then. The C1 was approved to allow typical uses such as retail, offices, daycare, those types of uses, it wasn't allowed for something as intense as this. So the staff recommendation was for disapproval with the staff report that went out, and the applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Applicant's not here. I'm assuming that a number of y'all are here for this particular issue, would you raise your hand if you are? Okay, that's what I thought. Is there, before we get started, is there a person that represents the group? Everybody's here as an individual. Okay, so what I'm going to ask you to do is, is if you're bringing us unique information, great, but if, if we hear repetition, I'm going to ask you to yield for your neighbors. Okay? So that being said, who'd like to go first? Young lady right front, out front? Please give us your name and home address.
I live at 211 Regis Street, which is off Murray, and all my neighbors will tell you about what a tough time we have getting out on Murray, since there are several subdivisions that went up, like Pebble Creek and Carrington and things like that. But I want to go on the record to mention that one of the reasons we have a problem is we can't have a light there, because less than a block away, there's already a light. So it's just not, it's not feasible to have two lights that close together. But the light is on Martinez Boulevard in Old Evans. Well, to the left of that light is a, a big strip that is zoned commercial, and they have just set in for a liquor license, a beer license, and the people that have asked for the beer license are called Gas Buddy. So I'm assuming that a convenience store is going there, because Gas Buddy be a convenience store. So I want to make sure that it's noted that there's going to be a convenience store there. So if they come back and want to get this rezoned for a convenience store, they'd be two within two blocks, and there's no way we can get a light off of Murray, it's just too close.
Now, this is not definite, but usually speaking, when they back off like they've done this, they're not going to come back and get it for the same thing. That's the norm.
Yeah, I hope so, but I want to go on record, because Ms. Harden had told me that if I, if I mentioned that, that it would be read in the minutes if they did come back. And since they pulled out, I'm thinking that they may have plans to come back with the convenience. So that's the only reason.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Who'd like to go next? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please give us your, come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm Wendell Freeman. I live at 132 Old Evans, and the proposed exit coming off into DeSoto is encroaching that buffer zone back of my residence. And I'm really concerned about the noise, light pollution, that, that type of commercial business there disrupt me personally and the neighborhood into that section of. business there disrupt me personally and the neighborhood into that section of Old Evans and Antswood. Traffic really bad in that area, but that's secondary to disrupting the neighborhood. Also, I don't know what their plans for hours of operation, but that would be bad if it's a 24-hour operation through there. We're concerned about the retention pond and the environmental concerns from that, as far as mosquitoes and varmints and things, because most of the retention ponds that I see aren't kept up well. I think the breeding grounds, insects and things of that nature. The exit onto Old Evans there, like I said, traffic's a problem. I believe that, I would say probably just under 50% of the traffic coming out of the fire station exits there. I believe that that would be a problem for the fire department. But I just think the noise, light pollution, and the traffic, that area would be bad for.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, yes, sir, do you have some besides traffic? All right, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
All right, my name is Michael Goodis, I live at 127 Old Evans Road, directly across-
Could you spell your last name?
Goodis, G-O-O-D-I-S. Okay, first and foremost, I didn't realize it had been rezoned to C1, otherwise I'd have been here for that and been on, raising my hand for disapproval of that. I live between two business locations already, animal boutique, hair salon that is on the left-hand side of my property. I am a resident, I have a family, I have a growing family, one on the way. Obviously, I would not personally want any business across the street to increase the already high noise volume through our subdivision, Columbia Heights. Not that it is a subdivision, most people don't realize that. The fire station is what it is, I work in fire protection, so kind of used to that. But the level of people in the area there, there have been a new number of wrecks. I don't know how many wrecks over the years I work at the end of Murray Road, most everybody there that lives there on that road can tell you, probably 20, 30 plus. Traffic to get in and out, my driveway is directly across-
I asked you about traffic, you told me you were going to do something besides traffic.
I apologize. My driveway, the only reason why I bring it up is because my driveway is directly across.
Understand we got traffic, so, right?
Other than that, the increase in noise and type of people that are going to be in the area, because we already have a crime issue in there, things going missing. Obviously, with my residence being across from it, already had several thousand dollars worth of equipment stolen.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to add something to the record besides traffic? Nobody? Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Oelrich, O-E-L-L-E-R-I-C-H. And I was reading when it was zoned for C1 back in 2020, sort of traffic related. What is the capacity of that two-lane highway? Because they said it was at or near capacity then, so I would imagine it's above capacity now.
Mr. Sterling, I'm going to defer to you. We don't get the traffic counts.
Y'all had a thing across the road, so I'm sure somebody did a traffic count.
Yeah, but we don't get that, that'll go to roads and bridges, doesn't come to us.
Yeah, the, as I said, the staff report from traffic engineering's comment is that it is nearing capacity, so they didn't put a number on it, but it sounds like it's getting close to the next capacity.
Is widening going to be on our next sploßed?
I'm not aware that it is, but that doesn't mean-
Because I know they're still going through the list.
Yeah, they're still working on the current list. I'm not aware that that was one of them, however, there's, you know, there's different pots of money too, whether that's T-sploßed-
Ladies, would you mind keeping the conversation down, please? Thank you.
Whether there's T-sploßed, or a regular sploßed, or going through the arts, MPO to, you know, use different pots of money. Widening will certainly, you know, provide some remediation to that, but of course, that will likely increase the amount of traffic that runs through there, because there'll be more lanes to do so.
Problem is, once you decide to build a road, it takes 10 years to build it.
It does, from, you know, conception to, you know, installation, it's usually about a 10-year period, and there would be acquisition, of course, that would need to occur.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. That's as good of an answer as we can give you tonight.
All right.
All right, if that's the last, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice.
Chairman, I make a motion to allow the applicant for RZ 220307 to withdraw without prejudice.
Do it here a second.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to allow to withdraw without prejudice passes five zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ 220308, C2 to M1.
I have this request for a rezoning from C2 to M1, property located at 475 Lewiston Road, we're only dealing with-
If y'all could hold your conversation down while you're leaving, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So we're only dealing with one acre of the overall 32-acre site, and looking to rezone this section to M1 for a self-storage facility. This location of the property, again, we're frontage on William Few and also Lewiston Road. And the current zoning, it is split zone, you have M1 at the back and then C2 at the front. We're dealing with this little piece right here, and again, to the north, the S of C2, south some S1 as well, and then M1 and 2, you know, to the west there. Airview of the property, again, you can see the existing self-storage already on the site. Again, they're looking to do climate-controlled, not a typical self-storage, it's already there. We'll kind of get into that here in a moment. And it's the existing site, and also the plat of the property. And again, this is showing the rezoning area, we'll be dealing with a variance here in a few moments with the setbacks and also buffers, excuse me, on the property. So again, what they're looking to do is a, what they're looking to do is a climate-controlled self-storage, okay, on the front of the property, you have your parking here, you know, fairly typical layout for climate-controlled self-storage. Overall, we're not really having much concern with it, except for the building itself, we do not have any sort of elevation with the application, also we have some conditions that kind of speak to that, and also with the doors, the door location as well. In terms of future development, this is within the mixed-use section of the Activity Center. The mixed-use section, like it says, could have a number of things within it. You do have, build it have commercial, some high-density residential, that sort of thing. With the industrial side of things, it does allow for some of that on the periphery with development regulations. That is, again, why we do have some conditions. With those in place, it would meet the intent of the future land use map. Again, going with the recommendation, we have approval with the following conditions. Again, the first one there speaks to the materials. You have bricks, stone, stucco, cement, fiberglass, or accommodation thereof. The one thing on the western side, it is permitted to have metal that is facing away from Lewiston Road, won't be visible, again, it's only up to 50% of it. Then you can use metal as a roofing or accent material on the running of sods, and again, also materials could be approved by the planning commission, and then you guys will be seeing this before they get their building permit. And again, with the roll-up doors, cannot be visible to northern, eastern, or southern property lines. Again, that western property line is going up against a cell tower, few people go to cell towers very often, so it really won't be an issue from our standpoint. Again, separate requirements approval with those two conditions.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, there's anything you'd like to add? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 220308, zoning of one acre portion of the property at 475 Lewiston Road.
Thank you, sir. Do it here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes five zero. Mr. Butler, the companion variance, file VA 220304.
This variance is looking at section 98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements, 98139 buffers and screening, and 981478 through use provisions, reduce building setbacks and buffers for a one-acre portion of property at 475 Lewiston Road. Again, the location of the property, we're kind of familiar with at this point, and also the zoning of the property, again, currently split zone. And the aerial view of the property, existing site, plat, and the overall concept with the, let's go back real quick. So with the remaining C2 here and here, you're looking at having building setbacks and buffers against those two properties. The request is to get rid of those, against all of this here. There is, the reduction here would be 20 feet, which they're able to meet without any issues. They have, or they will provide a fence down here, provide some measure of screening. Again, with the material, with the material requirements in place, there's not really an issue with getting rid of some of these buffers. So again, that's one of those, if that condition stays there, then the variance is kind of a, is a needed thing, but we're not having any concerns with the variance request itself. Due to all those factors, staff does recommend approval of the request, reduce building setbacks and buffers, is staff recommendation.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, gentlemen, do you all have anything you'd like to add? Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, file VA 22-0304, variance is to reduce setbacks and buffer for a one-acre portion of property at 475 Lewiston Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Any question? All in favor? Motion to approve passes five zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ 220309, major S1 revision.
Yes, sir, this is a major S1 revision at 285 Flowing Wells Road on 50.62 acres. The current zoning is S1 special for a private school, and the request is for an additional building. Here is the location on Flowing Wells Road. And this is the zoning map showing the S1, and basically surrounded by residential. A close-up of the aerial that shows the school buildings, mostly located in the center of the site, and then some along the front edge as well. Here's a plat of the property. And photographs of the entrance at the moment, obviously with the widening of Flowing Wells, there is a lot of construction there, and there is a light at this entrance as well. And this is a photograph of the site, and this is the actual area where the building will sit along in here, this area here. And the applicant has submitted a concept plan that shows the building footprint, and it will be sitting in this area of the site, and you can see that there is the private drive called Bussy Lane that goes in from Flowing Wells, goes around the circle, and all the other school classroom buildings are located around there. These are photographs of the existing site and the existing buildings around the circle. You can see several admin buildings and arts building, and then the rendering at the end right here is the proposed science building, which is the additional building, what this request is for. These are, these are the renderings, this would be facing the circle where the students will be dropped off. And this is on the other side from Bussy Lane. There is a bit of slope to the site, so the designer has made allowance for some steps and ramps for that to terrace the property, make it all fit in. The proposed materials are brick, stone, masonry, cotton walls, glazed systems, and colored panels. And the applicant did attend a redevelopment meeting with staff on February the 28th, and no major problems were identified at that time. This is the future development map, it is in the neighborhood's character area, which does allow for civic uses such as school, so it meets the intent of the future development map. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to add to the presentation? All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, to disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, file RZ 22-03-09, major S1 revision to add a new science building for Augusta Prep at 285 Flowing Wells Road.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve passes five zero. All right, our last item on the public hearing tonight, Ms. Montgomery, file VA 220303.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to section 90-53 List of Lot and Structure Requirements at 420 Halifax Court. This is the location of the property at the end of Halifax Court with the second frontage on Blue Ridge Drive. And the property is currently zoned R2, single-family residential, as are the other lots within the same subdivision. On the opposite side of the street, you have commercial and apartment residential zoning. This is the aerial of the site, and you'll notice that this property line actually jogs around the existing garage. We'll see the right-of-way plat and the previous variance that kind of led to that situation in a moment. There are two existing buildings on the site, and then the existing pad to the side where the applicant is proposing to construct a carport. This is the existing site with the two existing buildings, the house and that detached garage. And the photo of the existing site from Blue Ridge Drive, you can see the property does sit above Blue Ridge Drive. And that detached garage does have a previous variance on file from 1986 that allowed the garage to encroach into the setback at that time. A Blue Ridge Drive was subsequently widened as part of kind of the Riverwatch Parkway project, so there was right-of-way acquired from this property, and that's where that jog in the property line came from, to accommodate that existing building. As a result, the setbacks on this property with the current county code requirements are 30 feet from the right-of-way on Halifax Court, and 75 feet from the center line there on Blue Ridge Drive. That does mean those setbacks almost touch in that one corner, roughly where the applicant would like to place the carport. So this is the proposal, the applicant did provide the photo of the carport that is, has been ordered and is on its way, and where it will be placed on the property over that existing concrete pad. The proposed setback is three feet from the right-of-way on Blue Ridge Drive. Another, there's typically two concerns with front setback variances, one is site distance, and the other is parking for vehicles in front of a garage, making sure they're not ending up in the road. In this case, obviously, we're primarily dealing with this frontage on Blue Ridge. The property is above the road, so it's not a visibility concern, and they do not have access from Blue Ridge Drive, so the parking issue is also not a concern. They will be within the front setback from Halifax Court as well. Fortunately, they're on a cul-de-sac, so it's low traffic, and they're not impacting really the length of the driveway here, so the parking is not a concern on that frontage either. This is another photo of the carport location, you can see they're above Halifax Court as well, topography-wise. And staff is recommending approval with conditions, reducing the front setback from Blue Ridge Drive to three feet from the right-of-way as proposed, reducing the front setback from Blue Ridge Drive to accommodate the existing house and garage, and allowing for these structures to be rebuilt in the event that they're damaged and require such. Quite often, when we see existing structures within a setback, we may say that, you know, if they do have to be rebuilt, they have to meet current codes, but that's not really viable on the site with, given how narrow it is and with the dual-road frontage, so we are specifically allowing them to rebuild those structures if they need to. The front setback from Halifax Court is reduced to 15 feet from the right-of-way to accommodate the proposed carport only, with the other structures meeting the front setbacks, and any other proposed construction must comply with the required building setbacks. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir, is there anything you'd like to add to the staff presentation? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance?
Variance.
I went too far. This particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, disapprove, or to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 22-03-03, variance to reduce setbacks at 420 Halifax Court.
Do it here a second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve passes five zero. Have no legal matters, do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Alright, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment. Oh, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand come up. Before, before we start talking, give us your name and home address.
Um, I have lived in this state since oh three. I've lived off of Old Evans Road in two different streets. And, um, you didn't want to talk about traffic, but I'm going to, if you don't mind. This thing about the old Murray, uh, Murray Road, you know, one twenty-eight Old Evans Road, it says we were near capacity. Big to differ. We are past capacity. Murray Road takes forever to make a left-hand turn. Sometimes it takes forever to make a right-hand turn. I used to live off of Prescott. I had to change my process when I went to go to work, couldn't get onto Old Evans. I ended up going Hightower and hit Washington Road, that was a breeze. And part of the problem is, and I don't know where you guys come in with this planning, ever since they punched out Old Petersburg Road, made it Riverwatch, Old Evans feeds right off of Bobby Jones.
State road.
Pardon me?
It's a state road, we had nothing to do with it.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying, okay? It feeds off of Bobby Jones, goes all the way to Lock to Evans Road, or Evans to Lock Road. Major through fare. I know people who bypass Washington Road and go down that road so they can get to Bel Air or wherever they want to. I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
No reason to be nervous. Al, Al's the only mean one up here.
No, I'm not used to doing, I've never, I've never been to one of these before.
Ma'am.
Yes.
Excuse me a second. You do realize this Murray Road thing is a dead issue, don't you?
I do, but again, it was with prejudice, so I was, my, the way I understood it, they could come back in six months or so and try to get.
Well, somebody else could come back in the meantime with another, another plan.
Okay.
But nothing's gonna happen now.
Okay, but I'm just, that, so who, who plans some of these road things when they change from a residential to commercial? Because even, even if you have a beauty salon or a, another dog thing, you know, a, you know, dog daycare or whatever, you're still gonna have a lot of traffic that's gonna hit that corner. So, so my question is, how does, how does inf- the road structure go along with changing residential to commercial? And typically, once you start going commercial, other properties start snowballing that way as well.
We don't have anything to do with planning the roads.
Okay, so, so when you guys do your zoning or changing things?
We have, believe me, we would have already done a lot of that, but.
Okay, see, and that's, so that's why I'm up here talking about this, because I, I'm just, you know.
We have the same issues that, that you do, and driving it every day. And I, I would say, you know, have a conversation with your commissioner. Uh, write letters, call your department of transportation representative, who now, I haven't even met him, he's a new guy. Uh, we used to have.
Don't look at me.
Don Grantham.
He's gonna go off my head now.
Hang on, um, let me give you his name.
Old Evans is a county road, just. So, yeah, so to your point, we, we understand the concern that's out there. Obviously, we, you know, as part of the review, this review and every review, we have all of our departments looking at it. Traffic engineering took a look at, uh, Old Evans and Anne Murray Road for that matter. And, uh, you know, that was part of their review comment, was that it was nearing capacity. Uh, oftentimes, what we think is overburdened roads are actually under the capacity limits. Reality and perception aren't always, are the one and the same, but we certainly know that if, if they're making the comment that it's nearing capacity, that it's time to be reviewed and, and figure out a solution. And so, I think, you know, not just because of this application, but certainly this highlights a, an area of concern that we need to be addressing from a county standpoint, and not just a planning or a traffic engineering standpoint. So it's on the radar. Um, and that doesn't mean that there's an imminent plan to, you know, widen or do, you know, necessarily any improvements, but it's been certainly, um, highlighted by this application again.
Yeah, the, the process to, to i- is, is, because I was like you, I've, I've been, been around here for two or three weeks on the board here, and, and I thought, uh, building roads and doing things was a lot easier. Uh, when you have to get waivers and approvals and right of way and move utilities, it, it's a Herculean affair.
Oh, I understand that.
Have you seen the wayfaring signs that have gone up, like point to the, to the, uh, government complex? Uh, that, you know, you'll see one over here on Evans Town Center Boulevard. Okay.
I don't typically come this far because I'm living in my neighborhood.
But around the county, you'll see them, they'll, they'll direct you to different things like Blanchard Park, or to, to the, uh, the Evans Town Center, that kind of thing. You know how long it took from concept proposal to those signs going up?
Five years?
Six.
Oh, I missed it by one year.
As, as a, as a, as a businessman, that drive, the pace of government drives me insane. There is no way that I could do it, because it, it, things that make sense don't seem to happen at a normal pace. And I, and for the life of me, I mean, Mr. Dempsey, since you've been chairman of the commission, maybe you can explain it, but I, I don't understand why when things are obvious, they can't.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious though.
Move faster.
To be helpful to you.
Yes.
The, the growth is outgrowing the pace of the roads by far. And we'll give you another good example. I live on Lewisville Road in Appling, supposedly in the country. It was when I bought there twenty years ago.
Sure.
Now, Lewisville Road that comes into Columbia Road in a rush hour in the mornings with a stop sign, it takes as long as fifteen minutes to get on Columbia Road, and what you would think's the middle of the country. So, so as problems, these problems have just exploded throughout the county, and I'm not making light of yours. I'm just saying that it's just ridiculous at how far behind the curve we have gotten with infrastructure on this, in this county.
And the problem's the formula. You have to, it's like the school board. Uh, they have to be in portables for five years before they can begin the process of building a new school. So you have to have the demand before you can satisfy it. And it's crazy to me that you can't think ahead, but that's, that's Atlanta.
See, and one of the things I'm thinking about is, I live in an older established neighborhood, and my husband and I chose to live in that area, and I, I like it, and it's convenient, it's nice, it's just, right now, the traffic's gotten out of hand. And I know that, um, new, new construction, new homes, everything is gonna happen. It's part of expanding and growing, and everything is going further out. So like you said, you were in the country, you're not anymore. I have a problem with, and I don't live out in that area, and I understand it, but I have seen backups on I twenty. I've seen, you know, traffic backed up past Sam's Club when I come home of Bobby Jones, or I see the traffic backed up to the, past the fire station on, on the Old Evans Road. Um, but it's like, somebody should plan some better infrastructure to get to these new developments instead of going on existing.
But we can't plan it until the need's there. That, that's, that's the formula at the state. Believe me, we have tried.
Okay, see, that's what I don't.
It's not just with the state, it's with the feds. It's, there's a formula that you have to meet. It's like, we've been, we've been talking about a gate, a new gate on, on, or a new exit on I twenty for how long to feed Fort Gordon because of the expansion there? It finally got approved, and I think that exit, that off ramp, and the road down Robinson Avenue going into Fort Gordon is gonna be a hundred and seventy-one million dollars. And.
Never expanded.
And for something the federal government created, they have drug their feet in helping us fund the thing. It's just beyond belief to me. But again, that's a conversation.
Something, something you'd appreciate. Everybody screams, "We need industry, we need more growth in that direction." Well, Amazon came to Appling, you know where I'm talking about, I guess, at Appling I twenty exit. But all these folks that moved here and moved to what they so-called the country out where I live, now, they're the very ones that are raising hell and complaining about all the traffic that they brought with them.
Well, yeah, that's.
I go figure, you know?
That's like a lot of business.
And, and I tell you, part of the issue too, um, if, if you haven't looked at it, go, go to the U S Census and play with the new data that's up there. Uh, I spent about an hour yesterday, I'm a geek when it comes to stuff like that, I'm, I'm in the marketing business. But, uh, Columbia County grew, and I think we're undercounted, we grew by about thirty-two thousand people. Lincoln County lost population. McDuffie County lost population. Richmond County over ten years added six thousand and fifty-eight people. But their birth rate's barely keeping up with the death rate. So people want to come here, and, and I don't think, we saw that twenty years ago, thirty years ago, when we might could have gotten ahead of it, it's just we've got something people want. Now, you go down, say around Savannah, Chatham County grew about, by about the same we did here. Bryan County grew by twelve, fourteen thousand, Effingham grew by about the same. They're up about ninety thousand people, but they've spread them out into other areas where we haven't done that here. People see Columbia County successful, and they want to be here. So we're kind of a victim of our own success.
That's, that's why we moved here. My husband came, came down to it, guess that's why we moved to Columbia County.
And, and you know, and, and, and another reason, uh, poverty level here is six point seven percent. Richmond County, it's almost twenty-six.
Now, see, you're not near as nervous.
No, I'm getting better. But I do want to say thank you for probably allowing me to go beyond the five minutes.
Oh, that's fine.
If anybody learned anything, that's great, because I did.
It helps us to vent too, honestly.
I, I, I want to thank this young lady here for, you know, when I saw the signs coming up on, um, Old Murray Road, I contacted the county and I spoke with her, and she told me what I needed to do, so I printed everything out in relation to what I was going for.
Well, thank you, we really appreciate y'all coming out. It, uh, it means a lot for.
Don't talk about traffic, it was like, okay, general, I wrote it down, I got, I told my daughter, okay, here we go, public, I'm gonna talk.
Ma'am.
So, thank you for your time, and.
Yes, ma'am, thank you all. Uh, at this point in time, if there are no other public comments, I would like to make a motion to, yes, sir? Give us your name. Yeah, give us your name and home address, we know you, but not everybody else might.
I've been there and I, I've done that. I've been on.